Okay, excellent.
Good job.
We lose Anthony now?
I'm here.
All right, excellent. Just black.
My service where I'm at is not good, just so you know.
Okay.
Can you see anything, Anthony?
Yes, I can see everything.
Oh, all right, good, because we just see a black space there.
All right, so let's call the meeting to order. So today it is now 6:05 PM. We'll have all of the members of the of the board introduce themselves.
Lucy Tesno, alternate clerk.
Okay.
Anthony Larrange, zoning board member.
Okay, and Carl Lindley, I'm the chair. We're here today on applicants, I believe, Chris and Bryn Stark, who are asking for a variance regarding a setback requirement. And I'd ask that the clerk read the legal notice that was published in the Barry Gazette.
Was published twice in the Barry Gazette, the 11th and on the 18th. The Okam Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a regular business meeting, May 9, 2024, in Memorial Hall, Okam Town Hall, 2 Colbert Road, Okam, Mass. There will be a public hearing scheduled on the following items, starting at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter, as can be heard. Owner applicant, Chris Stark and Bryn Stark, location 680 Spencer Road, Okam, Mass, map 411 parcel 10. The applicants are requesting a variance from Section 5, Item 3 of the Okam Town bylaws setback requirements. The applicants may bring all pertinent information and plans with them, and may bring a consultant slash attorney to answer questions and to represent them at the hearing. Interested parties and abudders may review the application by calling 508-882-3358 and making an appointment to view the application at the town hall. Respectfully submitted, Lucy Tesno, clerk, zoning board of appeals. And I would take note that we did have one person asked to see the files. Since she was out of state, I mailed her the files.
Okay.
She wanted, in particular, to see a picture of the map, so I did send that off to her.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, if we could have you read the denial that the building inspector had issued?
Sir and Madam, based on complaints received by this office, I have reviewed your property located at 680 Spencer Road, map 411 parcel 10, and the paperwork submitted by you to the zoning board of appeals. Based on the drawings submitted and the conditions noted on your property during my site visit, I have made the following determination. You have constructed an addition to your barn which does not conform to the zoning bylaws of the town of Okam. Additionally, you neither applied for nor received a building permit for the work in violation of the State Building Code 780. You are hereby ordered to cease and desist from using the building for any purpose until you have applied for and received a building permit for the work which has been done to date. We will need a certified plot plan with your application showing that the addition will comply with the zoning bylaw of the town of Okam, 5.3 lot line regulations. No structure shall be erected within 50 feet of the sideline of an abutting lot, nor 50 feet from the front lot line. Please notify this office immediately if you have plans. If you choose to remove the addition to restore the building to size and location shown on your application for zoning variance, you will need to apply for a building permit to remove the addition. If you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact this office. Regards, Robert Lanciani, building commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Normally, we would then read into the record the Okam bylaw, but it was contained right in that.
Yes, it was.
Which is 5.3 regarding the lot line regulations.
And I do want to note that all the abudders were notified by certified mail. However, two of them were never picked up or never signed. So they were returned to us, but all of the others have been signed and have been received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll note that for the record. So how we're gonna proceed on the hearing, like we did last time, is that we'll allow the applicant to present whatever information he or she may deem appropriate. But before they do that, like I have done every time, is I want to encourage the applicant to understand that what the board is tasked to do. In order for us to grant the variance, we have to find three things. First, we have to find that owing to circumstances that relate to the soil conditions, the shape or topography of the land or structure, and especially affecting your land or structure, but that doesn't generally affect all of the land in the zone, that there's something essentially special about your particular piece of land. Two, that as a result of that special nature of that part of your land, that complying with the bylaws that everyone in town must comply with creates a hardship to you. And three, that if we allowed you to do that, granted the variance, that it would be within the public good and would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purposes of the ordinances and bylaws. So with that said, I would note for the record that you had previously submitted, and I haven't seen what you're gonna submit tonight, but I believe had previously submitted a request a couple of years back in which this board had determined that A, there was nothing unique about your particular lot of land, B, that because there was nothing particular, unique about your lot of land, that therefore could be no hardship, but that C, the third requirement, that it wouldn't harm the public good to grant it. But having only met one of the three prongs, all three members of the board voted to deny the application. So I guess I would, in conclusion, before you begin, urge you to explain what has changed between then and now that gives us the ability to grant your variance? And I think we have some folks present as well. And who do we have present?
Robert Lanciani, building commissioner.
Thank you.
My wife.
Thank you. All right. And so I've asked the building commissioner to be here as well, to get some input from him as well. So the floor is yours.
All righty. I'm gonna hand you this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hand you this too, Lucy. And then I want you guys to, if you don't mind, looking at the plot plan here. So that's the original plot plan without, that was what we had originally done. Prior to me seeing you, that is exactly what the barn shed looked like. And it's identical. If you look at the picture that you see there. It was claimed that we added an addition closer to the road. We did not. That is from 2021. The picture at the top. The picture on the bottom is from a few days ago. We did enclose the back thing, the back shed roof. And that is what we did. We put windows in the other part of it, too. And so I wanted to talk to you guys about that, because we were told that we had expanded closer to the road. We did not. It is identical footprint to what it was for.
So let me ask you, if I'm looking at these, so I'm trying to then compare picture A to picture B. Correct? Okay.
So this is the component that's in question, and it's right here. Okay? And you can see it right here on the plot plan. And then these are the windows that have been installed. So we got two windows, and we've got this. Yeah, please, come right around.
I didn't want to get in trouble.
This is from 2021. This was the roof that was right there. This is from 2024. This is the roof. We did not get any closer to the road. When we last met, you specifically told me that I had to work within the footprint that I have, that you would not grant me the variance. And I held up my honor to that, and I did not go outside of it. That was, I would not do that. That would be an obvious latent.
So after our meeting, did we put the windows in?
Correct.
And we put some siding in?
Barnboard up.
Barnboard up. Okay. Is that the entire scope of the work that was done?
Yeah, yeah. There was windows and barnboard that were put up. So it is now, you know, it has light inside of it, and then that back section is closed. But this was the original roof that was on there when I first presented to you. And as evidenced here, this was that roof right there.
Okay.
So that's, it's just a shot.
This is the main structure in the gray, and then this is the little.
And this is the area that.
Thing that jets off of the side.
Exactly.
And what is it that jets off of the back?
That's just an area that was also, some barnboard was put up on it. But that was original, that's part of the original structure. That's my neighbor.
Do we have pictures of that or no?
Not on here. I mean, I can show you the pictures. But that was, the part that's in question is this component right there. Yeah, that's the part that's in question. And so the building is over 11 years old. We do have, as we noted last time, we are on a grandfathered lot. Therefore, we're a non-conforming lot. And being a non-conforming lot, we only have 225 feet of road frontage. Our well line and our septic are somewhat constricting. Our well line runs along the eastern portion of our property on that map there. And then our septic system takes up the majority of this portion right here.
For the leach field.
Yeah. Back here, this is very wet most of the year. Slowly have been trying to fix that problem, but we do have some issues of water running around back there. And so this area is not a very good area at all to put a building. And on top of that, the cost in order for us to put a building, it would be about $160,000 as outlined on there.
Let me stop you. Mr. Building Inspector? On that, could you comment, I guess, for us? What your take is, it looks like between these two pictures, they've added these two windows, and it does look like there's some roof structure, you know, I don't know what they call it, a lean-to or whatnot, but something here that is indicated here. And when is this map from?
This is 2022. Sorry, it's before our meeting, January 2050.
The original one that was submitted was the surveyor had made a mistake because he showed the addition that was wanting to be put in. And so he included that shed roof as though it wasn't there. And he had made a mistake, but we didn't catch it because it was gonna be tied into the front and go and expand on that.
You're putting a hip roof in, but.
We had him adjust that and show that.
There you go, yeah.
And so that was the original proposed one, and he made a mistake with making it seem like it wasn't there.
This is what was submitted initially.
When you say initially, what?
The first application for variance.
Okay.
This is, this is the package that was given to you.
Gotcha.
That showed a square with something coming off the back and towards the road.
Yeah.
When I was there, before any of this was done, I had been to their property for something else. I do not remember, so I can't say how long this has or hasn't been there. But based on their, I used their drawing.
Yeah, from previous.
Which they submitted and told me how accurate it was, that that's what was there.
Right.
Then once I received the complaint, I went out and saw this.
Right.
In the windows, all of that would have needed a building permit. This doesn't resemble this to me, so I assumed.
That was new construction.
That's new, after you had denied the variance.
Yep.
So.
Which honestly, Robert, you are with, based on this. And that's why we wanted to talk to the surveyor, and we had to have him give us this map.
The complaint that came in, was it a written complaint, a just a call, an email?
And it was by somebody.
A fictitious person.
But a person whose name does not exist.
Her name is Jeff Lagney. Jeff Lagney does not exist.
Do we have a copy of the email for the record?
No.
Okay, do you have a copy in your file?
I had not printed it. It's in the computer, because I don't. So we can go back and find it.
Okay.
So the complaint, supposedly the complaint has complained twice, and the person is not our neighbor. And I know, as Robert stated, he still has the right to come and tell us if he needs a building permit.
Yeah, absolutely.
But our concern is that we're going from zero to 60 here. We're taking something that's benefited the town immensely, and we're saying we need to destroy it.
And I. So I'll be honest with you, where I'm coming at this from is A, as far as the issue of whether, I don't like the idea that it's somebody who used a fictitious name. If somebody wants to complain anonymously, I have no complaints about that. The materials that you submitted, not tonight, but previously, and that accompanied, I think, this part of your application really just kind of went to, hey, I'm a nice guy. I'm a good person. Let me do this. And I frankly, the rule has to apply to nice guys, and it has to apply if you're a jerk.
Yeah.
And so.
And so I feel like we have better evidence in which to prove that we meet those.
We, no, agreed. So.
Those requirements.
Let me, let me get my thoughts out. So. And as far, if somebody wanted to complain anonymously, they may think you're a nice guy, but just don't want this close to their house. And so they should have the right to make a complaint anonymously. And I think the building inspector is correct that whether anybody complains or doesn't complain, his job is simply, these are the rules, and I enforce them as I see fit, as they are, and uniformly. This, though, does appear that this picture, what, let me ask you this. What information do you have other than this picture that you've typed in underneath, taken on April 3, 2021? Tells me that it was taken on April 3, 2021.
This, this shows, right?
Okay.
And it's dated.
Yes, and it's signed by a.
So this plot plan is dated 2022, January of 2022.
This was before our previous meeting that we had. And so I know that they don't match up.
What was the date of our previous meeting? I think I've.
Was it March or February?
February 28 of 2022? And so this is.
Decision was made May 5 of 2022.
Okay, and I'm looking at an application here of 2/28/2022. So this was.
The hearing was May 5.
May. Okay. And where was this photograph? Where did you find this photograph?
I just have it on my computer. I mean, I've got, I've got a bunch of them. Actually, if you look, Carl, I had shared with you the presentation. I don't know if you still have it, but in that presentation, that's where I pulled that photograph from. That was a presentation, it was a digital presentation I'd shared if you've googled.
Okay.
And that has that photograph time stamped in there, then. And it's before our meeting, obviously, because I prepared it for our meeting.
Yep.
So.
So it was nothing that was newly.
No, no. You guys were very clear. I cannot go closer to the road, so.
All right. I think I've heard everything that I need to hear. Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? Is there anything else the applicant wants to let us know?
Well, I mean, there's a couple other things, if you don't mind me putting them out there.
On the record.
So one of the important things would be that if we did have to change the building, it obviously would be a significant burden to us, cost wise, that does not concern the town. But to put in a driveway alongside the property, we would have to request yet another variance in order to go near the Oliver's property. And we would be removing a significant number of shade trees, which is based on Chapter 87, Section 4, would be also a concern. We'd have to meet the select board and whatnot. So that's a concern for us that we want to fix. As you know, I've talked about it, I know the nice guy thing. We do a lot of volunteer work, and a lot of the benefits have been through this building, benefiting Scouts, Okam Congregational Church, the Folks Memorial Library. You've probably seen all the signposts that I built for them, the story walk and the tables and all that grand stuff. And that's nice guy stuff. I understand that.
It's things that have benefited the town.
But you have to remember, you don't know how many volunteers we have in this town that do the same thing.
Yeah, no, I know.
That brings me to another point. And you had said, Lucy, when we met last time, that you didn't want to set precedence, right, with me getting a variance? But we know that in town, there have been people that have recently received a variance in February that's much closer to the road, much closer to the property line, seven to eight feet, and 12 feet from the road. So all we're asking is that we can keep the building in place as is in order to continue using it as a shed, and also, once again, to benefit the town with all the other volunteers that are out there that we're very grateful for. We've been here for 15 years, and we do absolutely love living in this town, and we do absolutely love helping the people in the town.
Okay.
You know, and then, yeah, and just trying to put, there's, the way our property is shaped, there's no other good place to put it unless we put it way back on the backside of our property. And that would require us to put telephone poles in and run electricity from the road. And the cost would be substantial. And then we don't even know if the soil would be able to handle it because of the wet nature. I mean, our house has a French drain that runs around it, you know, and all the rain that we've been getting this last year, basically, and how wet things are.
If it's that wet, it could be a wetland, then you'd have to go to.
Well, it's not, it's not a wetland, but it's, you know, but the soil and the topography of the land is not suitable for a building, and the amount of trees that would need to be removed, and the cost of putting a driveway to be able to run a truck to pour concrete, to get a building to be put up, to get electricity done, would be a financial, like, a burden. It would be, you know, well over $150,000 for us to put up a brand-new building to get something back there. And we can't do that. He's a school teacher. I run a business.
Once again, that's nice guys.
But it's like financially, it's not something that.
But evidence-wise, this is the same building that's been there.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Building Inspector?
If I may, not saying for against. But I heard a statement that the roof was put on about 10 years ago. They have no records in their folder showing any permit called for the original roof, which would have triggered.
The same variance.
The same variance request before any of this cost and other work commenced without permits, without variance. Unfortunately, and I'm not trying to speak to deny it, but it's a self-inflicted hardship. I've been on the zoning board for 25 years. Self-inflicted hardships is not a hardship.
We understand that, Robert, but it's something that would decrease the value of our neighbor's property removing. It would leave a ugly scar in place of it. And we truly do love our neighbors and value them.
Who owns the property next to you?
It's Roberta.
Probate.
Yeah, Roberta Cioci.
Mrs. Cioci, right?
Yeah, she had passed away, and so her, her, her son, yeah, Roberta. So her daughter, the land is in probate. We have spoken to them.
They live in northern Vermont. They've come by.
I've been in contact.
Very nice.
Yes, yeah.
McCarthy is her last name.
She wanted, yeah, she wanted me to send her the information, which I did do.
Yeah.
But she did sign her card, and I did get it back.
Yeah, and so I know that the property next to us, you know, it has 70 feet of road frontage, and then it opens up, but, you know, they have no desire. They don't want the land to be built upon at all, you know? And so I know that it's not a burden of, you know, of requesting a variance of closer to their property of the way it is currently.
That doesn't matter, though.
Someone else has joined us in the.
Hi.
Mr. Mann.
Okay.
Robert Mann.
Robert Mann.
Did you want to be heard on this matter?
Sure. I just want to say that you couldn't ask for better neighbors than these two.
Okay.
And their kids. I have no objection to what's going on as far as building permits or anything like that.
And where is your property located in comparison to theirs?
Directly opposite of the road.
Across the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm also up the street just a little bit, just past Cioci's, my land.
I think I gave you all the other letters that were written.
Yes.
In support of them here.
Yep, there was numerous letters, again, speaking to things that I don't think that the board can consider.
Mrs. Cioci did go to her lawyer to ask what he thought. And he said, you know, since he didn't have the information, he said, well, you better check and look at the map and like that. That's why she called me. She says, I just don't want anything to happen to the property, she says, but she wasn't overly concerned. And I think she must have felt okay, because I haven't heard from her since.
Yeah, all right.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
Nope.
That was easy.
All right. So I think at this point, then, we can close the public, this part, and then the board can, we can make our decision. We can either feel like we have enough information to decide now, or if we feel as though, I think our options would be, we can either make a decision now. We could ask for an opinion of town council. Or we could, you know, if there's other additional information that we think we might need. But I don't think that there is. I think we've got everything here that we're going to get and all the information that is needed. So then the only issue is, should we ask town council for an opinion or not? So my, you know, my thinking on this is, when I came in, was that if this was expanded at all beyond what we had before, that there, I couldn't see a way that the applicant could, you know, make a case that it should be allowed, you know? We've already decided that, you know, we've made a decision on certain, certain things that he wasn't allowed the variance. And now, kind of being thrown a little curveball in that, hey, the last time we were here, it's the same footprint. I've just thrown up some barnboard, and I put in some windows on the, essentially, the same footprint that was there when I was here, you know, a couple of years ago. And so I'd hate to have someone have to take down something that, you know, has been there, at least since, I don't know how long that has been there, but at least there's evidence that on this plot plan, it was, it was there. And then we've got a dueling plot plan in which it isn't there. So there is no good answer, so I'd be happy to hear from my fellow members.
Carl, so just to be clear, they're not looking to expand like last time? They're just looking to keep the existing?
Yeah, so the yes and no. Yes, to the extent that when they were here the last time, I think what was physically at the property was this structure, this barn structure that had a roof, and it just wasn't enclosed with barnboard on the side. And it, but it does look like he was maybe storing, you know, some supplies out underneath that. And so I don't know that it takes. And so I don't know that it takes up any, it doesn't take up any additional space. Um, I think the counter to that, which was raised by the building inspector, is, hey, if I look back even further, I don't even see a permit for that, that roof that, that's been added to the barn. So if we go back to, you know, even further, uh, essentially, that main structure should have been allowed, and, you know, maybe they added on a, a, a roof that they shouldn't have added on to, and, and nobody complained about it for a decade or so. So that's, that's where we stand. There are no good. Nobody's going to be happy, you know, with anything here. So congratulations, Anthony. Uh, Lucy, your thoughts?
Again, would you like to see the?
Oh, I have the, yeah, I have them here.
Okay.
I was just checking out too. I would say evidently the roof was put on without a permit, without a building permit, without anything. Uh, the concrete base was put on when?
Uh, I don't remember.
It's, it was there.
Did you put it on, or was it, wasn't there when you bought the land?
No, no, it was one of the.
So when you say the concrete base, what are you, what are you referring to in the picture?
You know, the thing that the roof goes over?
Yeah, yeah.
This concrete base here?
Yeah.
They don't remember when that was put in?
Was that put, right, so when they built the shed, did they pour that whole thing at that point?
That's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it was done all at the same time.
And so you had a little concrete thing out there.
Slab.
Slab, and then.
That concrete padding is still too close to the boundary line?
Yeah, I think that what they're saying is just that that structure is fine, but the, the little roof off of it isn't.
Kathy, is there any particular ru, ruling for non-conforming lots?
As far as.
Anything we should take into consideration for zoning?
Not. If the, the lighter gray, the original, as shown on the plan that was given to you, that was drawn January 25th of '22, would be non-conforming, but it was pre-existing, non-conforming.
Right.
Anything that was added on, it would make it more non-conforming.
Right. Is it within our purview to make things more non-conforming or not?
That's your job.
In other words, it is within.
If there's a hardship that's clearly shown that you need to that property and no other property in general, yes.
Back to where we are.
Back to square one. It was a circle. Yep. I mean, my, uh, I'll be honest, kind of putting it all in the, the mix, um, and just spitting it out, I, I, I'm inclined to, to grant it. Um, because he was here, uh, two years ago, he requested. Uh, you know, it seems like he attempted to abide by the rules that, you know, was told, no, you cannot expand upon what you have. He didn't expand upon what he had, but he did, um, you know, put up the barn siding without a permit, which is required, and installed those windows without a permit, which apparently, uh, which is, is required as well. So, uh, since it doesn't expand beyond what was there, when we told him you can't expand beyond what is there, throwing everything else out, that, that's just kind of where I'm, when I put it all in the, the mix of it. And, and I guess just a, a warning that I would be very, very hesitant to come before the board again with any other request.
We have any other.
None. I promise.
We have none. I mean, literally none.
But they will still.
Thought that that was in compliance right along. I had no clue.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, this popped up, and I says, you've got to be kidding me.
No.
It's weird.
We have to go by the town bylaws, and that is the town bylaw.
Against a brick wall, but.
Yeah.
I, as a neighbor, don't see it that way.
Yeah. And I, I appreciate that. I appreciate everything that's been said, and it's a, it is a very difficult decision. Um, and I will note, you know, what, what today's neighbors might be okay with, tomorrow's might not, and that, um, obviously, the rules are there for a reason. I think that, that aft, I, I feel much better after hearing kind of what happened. So I, I, I'm inclined to allow this, given that, what, what I've heard, that it didn't expand after what we've had. Uh, uh, I'll be honest, if, if, if there was even an inch of expansion beyond what was here when we were here last time, I was ready, willing and able to simply say, there's nothing I can do, um, even though they're nice people.
That having put the siding on with the roof and everything, it made it much more visible, other than just a concrete pad.
Yes.
It's probably what gave the illusion, maybe, that they did increase.
The, the, the square, that footprint.
But it doesn't seem that they did, that, I am. I wouldn't pull up the concrete.
No.
But for the siding, the windows and the roof and anything else that was added, the building inspector needs to take a look, and you will need to pay.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we understand.
For anything that you have done, that you did illegally.
Yes.
We understand.
We understand that.
Yep.
We really do.
Yeah.
Okay. At least that's what I would definitely say.
Yeah.
I can't let that part of it go.
No, agree.
No.
I, I just can't, just can't.
Yep.
You don't need to.
What do you think, Tony?
I am 100% in agreement with, uh, allowing it.
Right.
And I feel like maybe what they did, uh, wasn't in good faith, maybe they failed to get the permit, but they abided by last decision by not expanding.
And that's, that's about three different permits, would you say?
That's going to be a building permit, and then there's probably going to be some extensive work to be able to prove that compliance with building codes.
Okay.
That's, that's a part B. That's part B of their journey. For part A, I think we get them past this. If I'm ready to vote, is everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So I will vote that, that it be allowed.
I also second that, and voted it to be allowed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that they must return to building inspector?
We can keep everything.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Inspector.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you. The best show in town. All right, we're gonna conclude the meeting then, and make sure I turn the, uh, this off so I don't record things that or stop video and.
Hearing closed.
End meeting for all.